December 18th, 2023, County Council meeting to order. Our first item is to recognize Tom Aldett for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
All right. Heavenly Father, we come together today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of the community. We will also pray for everyone's safe travels during this Christmas season and to enjoy your time with your family and friends. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have now our oath of office for newly appointed board and commission members. When I call your name, if you'll just come forward and stand in front of the podium, our county attorney will meet you at the front and swear you into office. Vicky Smith, Board of Assessment Appeals for District Seven, Paul Watts, Leslie Fire Tax Board, and Daniel Vanosta, Bethel Lake Wally, Land Acquisition and Preservation Parks District Board. And as you make your way, I do want to say on behalf of the council, we appreciate your willingness to serve and to serve without pay and usually without any thanks at all. But we do thank you. We cannot do the business that the people ask us to do here without all of our volunteers who serve on the boards and commissions, and we thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Thanks for being down to the floor. And Charlie, the district head of the office, how can you do so? Please raise your right hand. He has a review, please. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to track and appointing. And that I will, for the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend according to the Constitution of this state.
Constitution of this state, United States.
So we got it. Pledge of allegiance. Thank you all.
We do have a couple of appearances tonight. First and foremost, council and staff to recognize Randy Hubbard on his service and retirement with York County. Eric, I think you're going to lead us in this.
I will. So thanks, council, for this opportunity to recognize some of our staff when they're deciding to retire. Many times, we recognize those forward-facing staff. It's a pleasure to recognize someone that kind of works predominantly behind the scenes and pretty much does all the real work around here. So this is Mr. Randy Hubbard. He's deciding to leave us after 22 years, five months, and 22 days. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. He was a labor foreman for most of that time in our collection recycling department. So he's picking up trash, litter, cleaning up the centers, doing all the fun work. Recently, he switched over to our road maintenance division, got some concrete work under him.
Yes, sir.
So he decided to move on. Randy's pretty much the definition of a hard-working, dedicated, loyal employee. He was always here. He volunteered for everything we've always asked. He was here on countless weekends, not afraid to get dirty, always willing to help other departments. He kind of did it with some comic relief, too, every once in a while.
Yes, sir.
He liked to get along with all of his staff. So like I said, he volunteered all the time. One of the interesting things, like before we really had a parks department, Randy was the one out there cutting the grass out there at all those properties that we purchased. So another thing, back when we used to use inmate laborers, Randy was pretty much, he had a staff of, you know, four to five inmates a day that he would take out. I personally watched him try to mentor these guys. He taught them good work ethic, tried to teach them some skills. So when they got out, maybe they went forward and benefited from their time with Randy. So just talking to him, he's going to spend time with his family and for himself, which is well-deserved. So I think I'll probably see his application come across our desk later as a convenience center attendant, probably.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, see, I knew it. I knew you couldn't sit still. So just on behalf of County Council, we've got this clock. Your recognition and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And one day, I might be running for one of y'all's seats.
There you go. There you go. Love it.
Randy, we thank you for what you do and thank you for how you've served the county. Those are some tough jobs that you've done, and running for council would be even tougher, just let me tell you. But we welcome you to come back and look forward to your application for this next job opening, and we do appreciate your service to the county.
Yes, ma'am. Now, I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to work for y'all, and I learned a lot how the county operates. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You take care. We now have Elliot Davis to provide the annual financial report.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of council. We appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and talk about, present the audit results. Let's see. Other way. Sorry. I apologize. I thought, am I running? I'm running the slides. Oops.
Eventually, you'll be running.
Okay. There we go. Okay, so what we want to cover this evening is just some of the basics, highlights of the audit process, talk about our opinions, also the requirements under government auditing standards, a few financial statement highlights. We always want to touch on if there are new accounting standards that are issued by the Gatsby Board, which is the standard-setting board for local governments. Talk a little bit about the compliance reporting and then, of course, any questions that the members might have. So our overall objective is to issue an opinion on the county's financial statements. And essentially, that opinion is as to whether or not the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Those accounting principles are what any local government would use to develop and compile their financial statements. So we're going to go in and perform certain tests surrounding the balances and the disclosures to make sure that those are fairly stated in all material respects. And that's important for the users of the county's financial statements. So that's going to be entities that are issuing debt to the county. Also, in terms of grantors, the county took in approximately 25 million, 26 million in federal funds, or spent 26 million in federal funds. Those come with a lot of strings attached. So we also audit and give an opinion as to whether the county was in compliance with the many requirements that go along with those grants. So the good news is we did issue a unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's where you want to be. That's the highest level of assurance that we can provide. And essentially, that's our opinion stating that based on the audit tests that we performed that we were able to state in our opinion that the county, the financial segments of the county were correct in all material respects. There's a lot of work that goes into that for us, but also even more so for your staff. So we're very appreciative of Mr. Madden and the finance team, of all the work that they did to get us through the process. We received everything we needed in a timely fashion, and it was not only timely but accurate. If that wasn't the case, then we would be required to come to you as the governing board and let you know about that. But the work that your team did was definitely a testament to the ability of the county to provide accurate financial reporting and to have an audit process that was very fluid and went really well. So some required communications that we, as the audit firm, are required to share with you as the governing board. So we go through a very comprehensive planning process. We want to make sure we do our homework before we come in and start asking the finance team and your management team for records to take a look at. We're very focused on your internal controls, and those are the internal controls as they relate specifically to all the things that your finance department does every day in terms of maintaining good records and good financial reporting. So an example would be something as simple as are bank accounts reconciled every month? Does somebody review those reconciliations? Are they providing good audit evidence and monthly documentation that the bank accounts are being evaluated and monitored throughout the year? We do use a materiality threshold when we're looking at the balances and activity that the county records in their financial records. So if we didn't have a threshold or a limit, then we would be looking at essentially every transaction that the county engaged in, and that wouldn't be practical. So we do use sampling and we do use a materiality threshold that we calculate. So our responsibility under the auditing standards is to get to the point where we felt like we did sufficient audit work to issue that opinion that we talked about as to whether the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. The county employs a number of significant accounting policies. We look at that as part of our process to make sure that those are reasonable. Accounting, contrary to what popular belief, is not an exact science. It does require a lot of judgment and estimates on the part of your finance team. That requires a lot of evaluation on their part, and then we come in and look at the reasonableness of those judgments and estimates to make sure that they are lending themselves to accuracy within the financial statements. Your annual financial report includes, as you probably know, a lot of financial statement disclosures. Those are all the notes behind the basic financial statements to give them context and some additional information and explanation. For a local government and certainly a county the size of York County, any financial statement is going to have some errors in them, okay? Whether it's a county or any other local government that we work with or any entity, period. So it's a matter of whether those misstatements or corrections or uncorrected misstatements, are they material or not? So we always evaluate both statements, misstatements that are in the financial statements that may not have been corrected because they're not material, and then also corrections that are made. So we found nothing out of the ordinary there for a local government, a county of your size. At the end of the audit process, we always get written representations in the form of a representation letter from management, just attesting to awareness of certain circumstances throughout the audit. We just want clarity to make sure that management understands the process and that they understand the importance of the financial statements and make certain assertions as to items that were provided to us, responses that were provided to us during the audit process. If we had any disagreements with management throughout the audit that we couldn't come to a conclusion on, again, we'd be required to come to you with that. However, all of the interaction discussion that we had with the finance team was productive to get to the right answer to make sure that, again, the financial statements were presented fairly. Significant issues discussed with management, nothing unusual beyond what we would expect for a comprehensive audit process for a county your size. So as far as those communications, again, nothing unusual. We felt like the exchange with your finance team was, again, very productive and, again, allowed for a very fluid audit process. So a few financial highlights, starting with the statement of net position. So that basically is going to show all the assets and also the liabilities that are owed and owned by the county. And the difference between those basically gives the counties, what you would call in the private sector, the equity position or the net assets. So for the year ended June 30, 2023, and as of that date, the county held net assets of approximately 798 million. That was an increase of 668 million from 2022. Within that net position, you have different components, including unrestricted net position. That's the portion that's available for the county to meet its obligation. So it's a very important aspect or component of net position, and that was approximately $100 million. So the overall increase, going back to the first bullet point, in net position was approximately 130 million, and that consisted of the difference between 376 million in revenues and about 246 million in expenses that occurred during the fiscal year. So in addition to the statement of net position and the government activities, the county also presents its various funds. So the governmental funds, and those are going to be more short-term in nature. So they're not going to necessarily, the main thing they don't include to reflect that short-term status would be all that infrastructure and capital assets that the county owns and then the debt that's owed on those to purchase those various assets. So this presentation takes those out of play so that you're just left more with the short-term or liquid assets and the short-term obligations. So as of, at June 30, within those funds, the county held about $539 million, and that was an increase of 102 million over the prior year. So kind of driving that increase, revenues and other financing sources were approximately 335 million, so on your revenue side and sources of funds, and that exceeded the expenditures of the county for the year of about 233 million. And that was essentially due to, you can see in the budget actual schedules, you had revenues, property taxes, other revenue sources that exceeded budget for the year. And then also through some controlled and conservative spending, you had the expenditure side that, in a lot of cases, for a lot of line items, were below what was budgeted. So that drove that increase. So within each of the funds, the primary or major funds that the county holds, the general fund, of course, which is the main operating fund of the county, the fund balance was approximately 89 million. You also had, the county held about 253 million for various capital projects and about 57 million for future debt service. Also, for the non-major funds, an additional 139 million in fund balance as of June 30, 23, for those non-major funds. So focusing on the general fund, again, that's the main operating fund for the county. So a lot of the day-to-day revenues and expenditures are recorded in that fund. The general fund balance was approximately 36 million. Revenues for the general fund were 142 million compared to expenditures of 122 million. There were also certain amounts that were transferred for projects, reserves that the county has planned to maintain, including future law enforcement or sheriff facility, $7 million for various capital projects, and then another 1 million reserved for economic development. And again, expenditures, similar to what we discussed previously, were less than budget. There were some FTE positions that needed to be filled, but then also some conservative spending and budgeting on the expenditure side. And then again, property taxes, some other revenue sources actually exceeded budgeted expectations. And just a few other financial highlights. As I mentioned, the county, in order to execute operations, holds a lot of capital assets and infrastructure and equipment so that you can get the various missions done that constituency expects of the county. So there's about 494 million in capital assets held by the county, which was an increase of about 52 million. So that net increase is going to consist of items that obviously were added or purchased by the county. But then you also have depreciation expense, which reduces the overall capital asset balance to account for wear and tear as, you know, your fixed assets or your capital assets are utilized. So to finance most of those capital assets, there is a significant amount of debt funding, like most, again, counties' shell size, that's employed. So as of June 30, the county was obligated to about 123 million in debt, and this was an increase of about 1 million from the prior year. And that includes, it looks like, some water and sewer bonds that were issued, but also there was offset from the principal and interest, or the principal payments that are made throughout the year as you're continuing to service your debt. As I mentioned, the Gatsby Board or the Government of County Standards Board is always busy coming up with new standards for your finance team to comply with. Their latest thought process is Gatsby 96, which has to do with subscriptions for, mostly for software and other IP that, you know, you might use in terms of licensing for any given ERP function or general ledger function. The way the, this did not have a significant effect for the county because of the fact that probably by design, most of your contracts were structured to where they meet what's called a short-term exemption under the standard. So a lot of agreements that were cancelable and end up being really under a year or so in terms of time or extension. And that allowed the county to be able to not have Gatsby 96 as being a significant occurrence for your financial statements. So good news there. But it definitely was something that your finance team had to consider and make sure that they met that particular exception. And we concurred with their analysis in terms of the applicability of Gatsby 96. So I mentioned that the county, like any other local government, particularly if you're receiving federal funding and have federal expenditures, you're subjected to not only the financial statement audit, but also some other compliance reporting. So an additional report in and above the audit on the financial opinion that we're required to issue has to do with government auditing standards. The county, as a local government, is subject to a higher standard as far as their audit. We have to do some additional work and some additional due diligence for a local government, and so the county complies with that. I mentioned a lot of that is an intense focus around your internal controls. If we note compliance findings that rise to a significant deficiency or a material weakness within the government auditing standards, we're required to report those to you. Good news, and again, a testament to your finance team, we did not note any issues that rose to a significant deficiency or a material weakness. So that's indication that your team is doing a good job of implementing those daily controls over your financial reporting. And then in terms of a separate opinion and really a separate audit that we have to do, I mentioned the expenditures, the 26 million or so in expenditures that the county incurred from federal funding. We're required to do a separate audit for that. So we were able to issue an opinion based on our testing over those grants, and one grant in particular, that the county was materially in compliance with those grant requirements. If the county was not, the federal agency potentially have the option to take those funds back, but in our opinion, the county was in compliance with the major program requirements. And I mentioned the coronavirus, the State and Local Fiscal Recoveries Funds Act. That's the main major program that the county engaged in, as you probably are all aware. A lot of funding for capital projects coming from that grant source. So a very important grant source, but also, again, coming along with a lot of strings attached that you want to make sure you're in compliance with. So no findings identified, and the county did qualify as a low-risk auditee from the standpoint of audit risk. So that's a good thing. And both of those opinions were unmodified, and that's the type of opinion that you want to have. So in summary, unmodified opinions on the financial statements and in terms of increase in both net assets and your fund balance, maintaining good net assets and fund balance, indication of good financial condition for the county. So a good report from the audit perspective. And I'm Chairwoman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I heard you say that the county is judged by the highest standard of audit, and to do that and to receive an unmodified opinion with the highest level of compliance is a testament to our finance team and our treasurer. It's one of those areas where I know our council feels very confident that this taxpayer money is being treated with the utmost transparency and that it's being treated fiscally responsibly. And I appreciate you being here tonight to share those comments with the council. Are there any questions that council has? Mr. Roddy?
Thank you for that information. I'll start off by saying, over the years, I've sat through these updates, and every year, I've learned to pick up on different things. The very first year I sat here, seeing all these numbers come out, all these big numbers, it was like, what is this? What's going on? And for our new council members, it'll get easier to understand what's really going on with these numbers, but I got excited to see what you presented with. We've grown our reserves from like basically 40 million. I think you said we have 100 million now in reserves.
Unrestricted, yes, sir.
If you had to pick one measure for a county or municipality to say, if I could only look at one thing, what would I look at to say this municipality or county is in good shape? What would that one thing you look at?
Yeah, I think that if you'll allow me two things, I think it's that unrestricted net position because that's really what's available, you know, to potentially meet obligations. And then also, within the general fund, having a, you know, a good general fund reserve, you know, to meet unanticipated contingencies is always important. So I think that York County is in good shape on both those metrics.
Now, this is my last comment or question. If, how many other counties across South Carolina, pretty much in the same position? Do you know of them?
So just off the top of my head, you know, there's a wide range and there's going to be a lot of different circumstances. You know, for example, one of the biggest contrasting requirements internally that a county might have, if you're a coastal county, maybe like Ory County, you're going to have different reserve requirements or contingencies because you've got different potential threats, right? In terms of weather and storm. And then you've got counties much smaller than York County that are, they're going to be looking at their finances differently in terms of, you know, what they reserve and what the future looks like. I would say that, you know, for York County, based on its numbers and dollars, that, again, it's in good shape as far as the fiscal responsibility, as far as the sophistication of your finance team and the ability to plan and know what reserves need to be accounted for. So a lot of it is also your team and your personnel. I think you got to, if I'm comparing and contrasting, there's some intangibles that you have to look at also to kind of feel good about, or not so good potentially about, you know, the county's financial health.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Yeah, real quick. First of all, thank you for the update. And again, you know, thank you to the staff and to our finance team, the great job they're doing, so nice work. Two quick questions. So the Gatsby- So the Gatsby rules, that come down out of the federal government, how far in advance are you notified of changes of those requirements? And, well, I guess I'll start with that question, yeah.
Yeah, that's the one good thing you can, and oftentimes, people in the government financial world will agree or disagree as to whether there's good substance to the rules. But I think, I would say that one thing probably most people would agree on is they're pretty good about giving you a good runway. So they'll usually, you know, it's usually probably at least an eighteen-month, two-year, you know, notification that this has become a standard that, you know, local governments are going to have to comply with. And then they go through a vetting process that they ask for. So if the Gatsby Board comes up with a concern, they'll go through a process where it's a discussion, and then it goes through a bunch of different stages before it finally becomes a codification. So they make all that public. So, you know, people that are, you know, Mr. Madden and your team is going to pay close attention to what the Gatsby Board is ramping up for. But they give you pretty good anticipation of what those rules are going to look like by making all that public and then giving you a pretty, once they say, all right, we are going to make this a rule, they usually give you, you know, year, eighteen months before the implementation date.
Okay. Thank you for that. Second question, and it sounds like from within that process, there is an appeals process that local governments can appeal back if they see something that really doesn't make logical sense in regards to what they're looking for, I would assume.
Yeah, you know, they, so they'll oftentimes send out, especially if it's a really big lift, if they know it's going to be a tough implementation, they'll often do surveys and they'll select local governments throughout the country and ask them for input. But yeah, you're, any local government is free to write a letter. I've seen this oftentimes over the years where you can write a letter, express concerns, express why this may or may not make sense for, you know, your particular local government or a lot of local governments that are like mine.
Right.
And then oftentimes, you can get, I've seen where other local governments collectively write a letter to get more traction or appeal. And I've seen at times where that's, that has made a difference, to at least maybe dial things back or alter them.
Right, okay. Very good. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I appreciate the time.
We will move now to our public forum session of the council agenda. This is an opportunity where we get to hear from citizens who sign up and ask to speak. It is restricted to two minutes per individual who signs up. When I call your name, if you'll come forward and please give your name and address, pay attention to the timer on the screen, it'll go to a blinking yellow, and then it'll go to red when the two minutes is up. And if you'll kindly cut off your comments when that two-minute mark hits, I would appreciate that. Our first person who signed up is, I believe, can't read it, maybe Randy Hubbard?
Please go on.
Okay. That's right. Something with a G, Batista.
G.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. I get it all the time. Hello, Councilman. I, my name's Gee Batista. I live at six zero one six Willa Branch Court in Fort Mill, unincorporated Fort Mill, which is why I'm here. I'm here today to inform all of you of something that we're concerned of. I'm leading a group of concerned citizens on the Fort Mill side. I live right on the state line, and we have just found out from the town of Pineville that they plan on purchasing a plot of land immediately behind my property for a electrical substation. We're concerned about this for a couple of reasons. Number one, it is about ninety feet away from my property line and a property line of several of my neighbors. So that's obviously number one for us, for me personally. But as a group of citizens, we are concerned because of the area that's going to take up will impact parking and traffic, which we think is a safety concern for our street. So we're on Miller and Greenway Drive. And we're also concerned because it will take that flea market that that property is on, Miller's Flea Market, if you're familiar. It will probably take it out of business, and there are about five hundred vendors that rely on the flea market for their income, primary source or sometimes sole source of income. We're also worried about increased attacks on substations and the proximity to our homes. But first and foremost, we're worried about the fact of a different municipality in a different state being able to do something that doesn't benefit us but has a negative impact on us. So we'd like to see, like to just inform your county of our situation, and we're trying to come up with any recourse we have to, you know, really just make our voices heard, let the town of Pineville know that we don't approve of this location. We'd like them to find a different location and are requesting help from your county.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public forum session tonight. Those are all the folks that signed up. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Move now to our first public hearing item, which is found on page eleven of your agenda. Council to hold a public hearing and provide third reading of an ordinance to amend the existing agreement governing New York Chester Industrial Park, to add parcels within the geographical boundaries of York County to the multi-county park, to adjust and/or remove any parcels as may be necessary, to provide and/or remove corresponding tax math numbers, company names, or property owners associated with the added, and adjust and adjusted, removed parcels to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this item? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move close.
Second. Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Roddy?
As long as we've been doing this, and this partnership's been in existence, do we ever, or are we ever thinking about having a conversation with Chester County to see kind of what they're doing for its economic development and what these funds are going towards, just to kind of FYI?
There is, every year, there's a process. They actually give us some money and we give them money.
As far as the communication, like what kind of economic development they're doing or experiencing, and what we're doing, as far as council, I'm sure David Swinson talks with them, but as far as this council knowing what kind of activity Chester County's doing and what we're doing to let them know.
We do coordinate our efforts with Chester County in economic development matters. We also maintain a list of, it's a two-party agreement, that they send money to us each year, we send money to them each year, and we do track that, we can provide that to you if that's the kind of information you're looking for.
I was more interested in, I mean, obviously, the money's going, money going both ways is good, but just to know some of the projects and things that they're working on and they've done over the years.
I get a report. I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Send some on economic development here, I keep up what's going on in Chester. I'll send it to you.
Yeah, we also participate in I-77 Alliance, which is a regional partnership for recruitment along the I-77 corridor, things like that. So we do coordinate with them.
I think as an added measure, I think it might, I think Buck brings up a good point is for the community to maybe hear when we have on our economic development updates is to maybe invite Chester to come here and talk about the efforts that are being made annually on those multi-county industrial parks, because a lot of folks don't understand the process, and it's important to have those relationships. Maybe food for thought for David Swinson and our department moving forward. Do we have any other questions?
No, just a statement in regards to this. I mean, with the year that occurred last year and the revenue coming in from our operations of what we brought into the county, to move this forward to, again, is another way of, again, making it, making the opportunity for people to live here and work here. And again, that's our goal, is to minimize people traveling a long distance, keep them in the county, keep them working. And this is another nook in the cog to move forward with that process.
Hearing no other comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to our second public hearing item. You might want to grab your popcorn and your drink. Take me a minute. Council to hold a public hearing, consider amending and providing third reading of an ordinance amending chapter fifty-two sewer of the York County Code of Ordinances by modifying the existing county policy in section fifty-two point oh three, applications for service that an owner or occupant of a residence, a residence within the York County service territory for service, sewer service is responsible for maintaining the service lines to the point of connection with the county sewer main in order to clarify that the existing policy is applicable to properties which abut a right-of-way of a road or street that has a county sewer main by adding language to distinguish that property's previously within the Blue Granite franchise territory, now within the York County service territory, which have been or can be identified as lacking a service connection directly to a county sewer main located within a right-of-way of road or street abutting the property, shall also remain the property of the owner, but that in such instances, the responsibility of the owner or occupant shall extend to the property line of the premises rather than to a service connection located within the right-of-way by amending section fifty-two point one five conditions and charges for service connections and repairs to reflect the same, clarifying changes as applicable to section fifty-two point oh three for those properties previously within the Blue Granite franchise territory and which have been or can be identified as lacking a service connection directly to a county sewer main located within a right-of-way of a road or street directly abutting the property and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Move now to old business. Council to consider third reading of an ordinance to amend section one fifty-three point one six A-one and deleting section A-two of the York County Code of Ordinances in order to reduce the size of the York County Planning Commission to seven district-specific members appointed by county council, to remove at-large membership to the board and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries six to one. Move now to new business. Our first item, council to consider and adopt a resolution of the York County Council recommending that the South Carolina Department of Transportation, SEDOT, award a construction bid for the Interstate seventy-seven I-77 exit eighty-five interchange project, committing an additional sixteen million in C funds for the project to cover the total bid price gap funding shortfall and addressing other matters relating thereto. Do we have a motion?
Move that we approve.
Motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Council to approve award regarding bid number twenty-nine oh one for the HVAC replacement at the York County prison to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Digitrol Inc. of Gastonia, North Carolina, for a total cost of one million, one hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars, which includes ten percent contingency as part of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Committee and other reports, Health and Environmental Protection Committee, Chairman Watts Huckabee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Health and Environmental Protection Committee met and reports the following from our November and December committee meetings, that Mike Moore and Catherine Jones presented a detailed request to hire a specialized parks consultant to create the framework for a fiscally sound, multi-year master plan for county parks. It was also shared that there is money in the current budget to cover the expense of this request in two thousand and twenty-three. Therefore, our committee suggests council give Mike and his staff consent to proceed.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
This is something that'll come for the council unless there's an objection?
Yes, this came before council on October sixteenth, and then was referred to committee. And what did you say? What else?
Is there an objection to us moving forward, or do we need to put this on the agenda?
No objection to move forward from our group.
Put it on the agenda?
I think it needs to go on the agenda.
Okay. Takes one council member to do that. We'll put that on the agenda. Economic Development Committee meeting, Chairman Tom Aldett.
Yeah, so our Economic Development Committee meeting on Wednesday, December sixth, president was Chairman Watts Huckabee. And in that meeting, we had some very good discussion in regards to kind of capping what we've done for the year in economic development. Twenty twenty-three was a really incredible year for revenue coming to the county. One point six billion dollars of new capital with over fourteen hundred new jobs to the county. So it was a very big year, average pay of forty-three dollars an hour. So there was a lot of opportunity and there was a lot of revenue being brought back to the county. We also talked about our small business program. And part of our small business program initiative is that we want to work with entrepreneurs in mid-sized businesses. So there was a request to the Economic Development Director that he will be doing additional research on Spartanburg and Greenville to study their program that they have and then bring the findings back to the Economic Development Committee and look at how we can take the next steps in order to support our small business with a program that really makes sense for us. So very good meeting, and that was a general recap. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Finance and Operations Committee Chairwoman Allison Love.
So council members, Tom Aldett and Tommy Atkins and I met today at five fifteen, and we have made some recommendations for some boards and committees. The first is a recommendation of Lee Green from an at-large seat to the vacant District Three seat for the Board of Disabilities and Special Needs. Secondly, the recommendation for the consideration of the appointment of Patricia Myers for a second term to that board. The recommendation for the consideration of the appointment of Randy McCurry for the Rock Hill Fire Tax District Board, and then quite a few for the Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board, Jesse Spain for a first term, Joshua DeSantis to fill an unexpired term, Teresa Curtis for a second term, Karen Brackett Browning for a second term, Nick Maisy for a first term, Michael Guidry for a first term, Anthony Parrish for a first term. That's the Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board again. Okay. The Veterans Memorial Park Advisory Committee, we made the recommendation for the consideration of the reappointment of John Commons for a second term, the consideration for the appointment of David Walker for a first term, and the consideration for the appointment of John Lowman to fill an unexpired term. Rock Hill York County Convention and Visitors Bureau, the recommendation for the consideration, to consider the reappointment of Natalie Hoekstra for a first term, the consideration for the appointment of Andrew Corrigan for a first term, and the recommendation for the reconsider, for the consideration, the reappointment for Lisa Mosley for a second term. The Planning Commission, the recommendation for the consideration of the reappointment of Matt Velkovich for a second term. Building Board of Appeals, the recommendation for the consideration of the reappointment of Doyle Roach for a second term, Carolyn Johnson for a second term, and Johnny Neelands for a second term. We also made the, approved some of the allocations of funds from District One, and I'm just going to run through these, they're all in the amount of two thousand dollars, and those would be going to collaborative counseling, pathways of York County, fostering the family, the Riverview Fire Department, and defend the fatherless. We got a finance update, and we approved the minutes for the November twentieth Finance and Operations Committee.
Thank you, ma'am. We do not have any citizen concerns tonight. Do we have any council member, new, non-agenda comments before we have executive session?
Yes, I'd like to start off by saying, I received a call within the last, since the last council meeting. Someone was asking, did York County offer any senior home improvement programs? Obviously, we don't, and I told them I would bring that to the council's attention. Someone was looking to help out a senior citizen whose home was kind of, I don't want to say in disrepair, but needing some help, and I know the city does different programs, but this individual lives in the county, and I know those city programs are funded through programs through the COG, but I wanted to put it on our staff's plate to see if we could find some type of grants or things that we can utilize that assist our county residents if they come up with some issues, especially seniors who need some help doing some things to their home that otherwise they probably couldn't go out and qualify for any kind of loans and that kind of thing, but just wanted to put that out. Obviously, there are groups that go around every year that come into the area that help people with their home improvement needs, more so with your seniors, but just wanted to kind of put it in the atmosphere for our staff to see what we can come up with or any programs out there that we can lean on. And happy holidays.
Anyone else?
Yeah, first of all, I want to kind of piggyback off of what Bump was saying, this is along the lines of, of the elderly and disabled. Through, this year, we started, I had mentioned it earlier in the year, it was through access transportation, it was to give elderly and disabled an ability to get transportation for me, Altega Kane, Lake Wiley. It allows them to make one single phone call, they'll pick them up, they'll bring them to the doctor's appointment or grocery store, whatever it may be, and bring them back to their home. We recently were out on site for the Council of Aging, they gave us our numbers, they had, they're close to twelve hundred trips so far this year, it's really taken off for the people of the district, so, in the area, so I just want to share that with you. And again, it's a program that now feeds all of York County and before, there was something we didn't have in our district, in our area, so it was, it was a great add-on and it's continuing to move forward really well. The second thing, again, we're close to Christmas, so I do want to wish everybody a very wonderful Christmas and safe travels and enjoy your time. Thank you all.
Yep, remember the reason for the season.
I'd like to wish everyone in York County a very merry and blessed Christmas, especially my constituents in District Seven.
Anyone else?
Since we're finishing so early, I'm going to tell a quick story, how about that? This is storytime by Watts Huckabee. I'm going to try to keep it brief, but I think you'll enjoy this, so I'm going to share this. So, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Christians that feed the hungry here in York County. I don't know if you're familiar with them or not, but let me tell you a quick story. Nineteen sixty-nine, there was a man that lived in New York that worked for the Police Department. Police Department was having financial troubles, New York was having financial troubles, so a lot of policemen left and went to the Fire Department. Well, that wasn't really a great decision, so they ended up leaving the Fire Department. Well, this gentleman decides, a black man decides to leave New York and come see his father in Camden, South Carolina, but on his way, he came through Rock Hill. So, when he got out near the Catawba River, his car overheated and he pulled over on the side of the road in nineteen sixty-nine, okay? Nineteen sixty-nine, he pulls over on the side of the road and a white man pulls up in a truck. So, my friend gets out of his car and says, sir, hey, I'm, I'm having car, car trouble, is there any way you can help me get my car fixed? He said, yeah, I'd be glad to, but I'm heading fishing and why don't you go fishing with me and after we fish, I'll help you get your car fixed? He said, okay, well, he didn't have any choice, right, he's on the side of the road. So, they go fish, they come back, it's a true story, they come back, it's now getting dark, and he said, look, we're not going to be able to fix your car tonight, but I'll get it fixed in the morning, let me just strap your car to my truck and I'll pull you to my house, nineteen sixty-nine, and we'll get your car fixed tomorrow, you can just spend the night at the house and we get up in the morning, we'll get your car fixed and you'll be on your way. He didn't have a lot of choice, so he did. He went to this man's house, black man went to a white man's house, spent the night, of course, he said, when I went to bed, after we ate dinner, I went to bed, I slept with an eye open, because I didn't know what to expect, right? So, the next morning, he wakes up and he gets dressed and comes to the kitchen, he goes, hey, he said, I really need to hit the road, what do we need to get my car fixed? He said, no worries, he said, I fixed it this morning, let's have breakfast and you can hit the road. So, they ate breakfast and the guy, my friend Ronald King, if you know who he is, Ronald King, said to the man, I said, what do I owe you? He said, you don't owe me anything, I just want you to pay it forward. This is nineteen sixty-nine. So, Ronald King left Rock Hill that day, shot off to Camden, and his mind was about everything that's happened the last twenty-four hours. And on his way back from Camden, going to New York, he decided, you know what, New York's not where I need to live, Rock Hill in York County is where I need to live. So, he came here in nineteen seventy and started Christians to Feed the Hungry, and this man who does not take, since nineteen seventy, does not take a dime of income out of that not-for-profit. For fifty-three years, he's been feeding the homeless in York County. They serve fifteen thousand plates of food a week to the homeless. He gets a free car, a free place to stay and free gas and lives off a social security check since nineteen seventy. He's in his eighties, phenomenal man, doing a phenomenal benefit for us here in York County. And I just thought it was worth mentioning that as we think about the things that we're proud of and thankful for, as you said, Debbie. This is one man I'm thankful for, for what he does, seven days a week, in the wee hours of the morning, he's out working on our behalf. We have a lot of great people in York County and I'm glad that I'm sitting on this council to everybody and we have a chance to make a difference too. Thank you.
Top that out.
All right, I'll see, I'll see if I can top that with a little more current, current story. That goes way back to the nineteen sixties, was pretty good for most of us up here, weren't they? I just want to say that there are twenty-five school superintendents from across the country that have been selected for, as a superintendent to watch, and our own Sheila Quinn from District Two is one of those, so congratulations to her and she's probably way up there in the running to win something like that.
I, my story is not as, as eloquent and I didn't, wasn't even prepared to say anything tonight, but I did have the pleasure, I hope I don't tear up when I say this, my daughter teaches music and Saturday, I was invited to go watch her give this performance to the kids that are kindergarten-age kids at a Title-I school. And I was going to support my daughter, but I had so much on the list, I had a list that I needed to go shopping for, I still don't have my Christmas decorations all up in my house, my house looks a wreck, I had a, it's a mess, we got laundry piling out the laundry room, but I, I went to support my daughter and then I get there and I get to hear the joy. I mean, you could see other parents feeling similar to what I was, you know, they were there, they were there to support their kids, but when they started singing those songs, it reminded me of what, the reason for the season and the reason for why we do the things we do, and that is just to make a better place for our kids. And hopefully, that joy that they have rubs off on us and reminds us, you know what, that's why I do this, it's for them and for their futures. And I do want to say happy holidays and very merry Christmas to all of the people in York County and to my colleagues here on this council. I appreciate working with you and for the staff, you do such a wonderful job and I'm looking forward to, to a happy new year. With that said, do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, we do. Receipt of legal advice, York County EMS, and then a contractual matter, South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank, intergovernmental agreements.
Second.
Motion and a second, do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move straight into executive session. We are out of executive session, no action was taken, do we have any motions?
Yes. One, we have one motion. Motion to authorize county leadership and staff to address and discuss existing STB agreement with the state infrastructure bank as discussed during executive session.
Next to the.
Second, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.